Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock. It's time for us to start the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission. We'll call this meeting order. This time, I'd like to ask everyone that's able to stand to stand for an invitation to Brother Jack. Along that be the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Blankenship.
Let's pray together. Our dear heavenly Father, we come before you with honor and grace this evening, Father, thanking you for all the great things you've done. The things you've done for the city of Mount Pleasant, the City Hall, these commissioners, all that have a part, the plea in this city of Mount Pleasant. We pray we put you first, Father, in our lives, always. Pray for our military, pray for the people in service. And, Father, we just pray now that you'll guide, guard, and watch over us as we go through this night. Bless us now in all we do and say for you. In Jesus' name we pray this prayer. Amen.
Please, John. Pledge your allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation on our right and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Hey, this time I'd like to ask our recorder please call the roll, pause.
Yes. Mr. Granbury?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
All present.
All right, all present. I mean, we have a duly approved meeting tonight. First order of business will be item number four, approval correction of the minutes from the prior meeting of August 15th, 2017. Do you have those minutes have received, in motion, please, or any questions?
I notice no corrections needed. Mayor, I'll move for approval.
We've been moved for approval.
I'll second.
Been duly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have that, the minutes have been approved. Item five, for those of you who came in at regular time, or maybe just a little early, we have been honoring Brother Jack Taylor. Started this afternoon at nine fifteen, and we've had some talk with people, saying really nice things about Brother Jack. And tonight was his last official meeting with us. I'm sure he may come back down here to fill in sometime. Always love to come back, Jack, and do that. And we have a proclamation for Brother Jack, so he would come forward, and any of his family that wishes to come up, you're most welcome to. And we'll go from there with this.
It's a really small prayer.
Don't be bad for folks. We're all family. This is very, very small. They tell me I better bring my glasses. I don't wear glasses, but I do need them. And I wonder, why do we make it so small? They said, because he's done so much, we couldn't get it on the paper. So, I'm going to read this kind of slow, and we're just proud to do this. It's from the Office of the Mayor of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee proclamation. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant is proud of individuals who bring personal pride, belief in family, spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city. And whereas Jack...
Jackie.
Jackie Henderson Taylor.
Well, they might have named him.
Most time it's all the way around, he'd be named Jack, and they'd call you Jackie. But that's Jackie Henderson Taylor, born September 21st, 1934, to Garrett and Nadine Taylor in West Tennessee, in the small town of Sedonia. I've never heard of that town before.
It's in the Bible.
He was the youngest of three children. He has sisters Charlene Taylor Dunlap and brother Larry Taylor, who is deceased. He married Charlene Ingram, June 30th, 1956. They moved to Chicago and lived for a couple of years there, then he was drafted to the Army. After discharge from the Army, Jack and Charlene settled in Milton City, where he's lived ever since. Together, they had five children, with the oldest, Jackie Carroll, passing away as an infant. The other children are Steve, who lives in Kansas City, Missouri, and wasn't able to be here at night; Lori, her husband Billy; Mike, wife Tina; Christie, husband Kenny, who all live in Mount Pleasant. He has five grandchildren and two step-grandchildren. He also has four great-grandchildren. Whereas he surrendered to the ministry in 1980 at the age of 46 and served as a bivocational pastor in many local churches while working as store manager at Price Bass Welding Supplies until his retirement in 1990. He became a full-time pastor after that, and again served several local churches. He retired from Santa Fe Baptist Church in 2006 after serving for 10 years. He and Charlene sold their home in Williamsport, where they had lived for 33 years, and moved to Mount Pleasant in 2006 to be clustered to their children and grandchildren. They rarely missed a sporting event bringing to their grandchildren. After moving to Mount Pleasant, he has continued to fill in for local churches as needed. Jack has always been active in missions. He served with the Baptist Disaster Relief Team and spent time in New York following 9/11 disaster. He's been on 26 local mission trips and four international trips. He's been an active member of First Baptist Church in Mount Pleasant since 2006, where he currently serves as a deacon. While Jack has served as city chaplain of Mount Pleasant for eight years, he's an active, faithful, and vital member of this community, and he has served in any way that he could. His life and work here on earth speak for itself. He received the Judge Ed T. Workman Award in 2011 for his service and commitment to the community. Now therefore, I, James L. Bailey, Jr., mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, hereby recognize and proclaim September 19th, 2017, as Brother Jack Taylor Day, and call upon all the citizens of Mount Pleasant to join in with us in recognizing our citizen and his family. Thank you, Brother Jack.
Thank you, everybody. You really give one, isn't it?
No comments?
I hate the comments. I love all of them. I've been told then, able to serve the city of Mount Pleasant. Right, you can read it. I need yours, y'all. Thanks, y'all. Thanks for the watch.
We certainly appreciate all of you coming out tonight to honor your family member and friend, and we appreciate it very much. Something like this, bitter sweet moments, we're so glad that Jack has been able to do this. We hate to see him go, but we know it's time that all good things come to the end. So, thank you, Jack, for all your service. You're always welcome to come back down anytime you want to. Mayor, we're not even going to let you run for a commission if you'd like to.
Mayor, if you don't mind, there's a couple of people I'd like to recognize here.
Absolutely.
If I could, please. Two weeks ago, with the Mount Pleasant Ball, we had the good fortune of naming a couple of residents of our community to a couple of very prestigious awards, I think. It recognizes someone within the military, done work within the schools, or whatever it's been. And at that Ball, Delores, our lovely Delores, was recognized for the work she's done with our school system, and should be, for the number of years she did with the Ed T. Workman Award. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, because not everybody's going to see it. Delores, congratulations. It was very well deserved. And the second person I'd like to recognize is Shane McNeese. And for those of you that are around town, you see Shane running around and the great work he does to help all of these ladies that are standing around here, and me. I'll tell you very quickly, he helps me. And Shane was recognized with the Maurice Lightfoot Award for the service that he's done within this community. And there was a great story that evening about the can drive that raised $10,000. And as I understand it, Shane was responsible for about 99.9%.
I'm just kidding about, you know, we...
And so, if you don't mind, I wish y'all would give these two very deserving people a round of applause.
He has a ballgame to go to.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Shane.
He's going to the ballgame. You're not going to play. Thank y'all for coming. He kept me straight while we were collecting.
Oh, wait, and he took, I have to add, he took the recycled things out of the community because he thought we were done with recycling. I told him, no, Shane, put them back in, you know, collect. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into item number six, completion review of any unfinished business from prior meeting. We have a couple of items there. Item A, ordinance 2017-1007.
Mayor, do you want to do Mr. McKelvey?
What?
Did you want to do Mr. McKelvey?
Yes, I did. I explained overlooked him. Excuse me, Brian.
That's fine.
I'm going to go ahead and read this one.
Yeah, you know, go ahead.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. We'll do it. I'm sorry, tonight, we have Brian McKelvey with us. Brian is a professional woman, nursing essence. He also has hired on to do some very important work for the Pope Home. He's here tonight to give us brief comments about what he would like to happen in Mount Pleasant, as far as our support for that project. This time, I introduce to you Mr. Brian McKelvey, my fellow president.
Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity to talk with you and the commission about the project that's going on today. We've been working on this project since August of last year. I'm the chairman of a committee, and it's not hired, I volunteered, as the chairman of a committee to look at relocating the tomb of President James K. Pope from the State Capitol to the home of Columbia. This has been a long project. We have passed legislation through the Senate and waiting to go to the House in January. I've given you the history of the Pope tomb, and any questions that you may have, I can do my best to answer. I wish Tom Price was here, who's the curator of the Pope Home. He could spout this off on top of his head, but I will do my diligence. It's a sad story about President Pope. He never really got what he wanted out of his will. His will was contested by family members after Sarah Pope died. And the property sold for about $26,000, and some family members got one 756th of the price of the property. It is, he died of cholera in 1949 and was placed by city ordinance in the city cemetery in Nashville because he had died of a contagious disease. About a year later, he was moved from the city cemetery to the Pope House, where he stayed for 42 years. Then after that, he was moved by convenience and by expediency to the State Capitol, which he did not really want to be. He stated in his will he wanted to be buried at home, and that home is no longer there. So, the only home left standing, besides the White House, is the Pope House in Columbia. So, in the spirit of his will, we are moving forward with this. We have contacted family members. We have one family member that's against this. The rest of family members that we've talked with are for us. We have also reached out to county mayors across the state of Tennessee. I've received letters, and I'm receiving letters from several counties. And I'll just tell them to you now. Giles, Franklin, Moore, Coffey, Cannon, Rutherford, Williamson, Marshall, Lincoln, Hickman, Lewis, Lawrence, Perry, Wayne, Dixon, Warren, Pope County, which is in East Tennessee, Wilson, Sumner, Humphreys, Weekly. I'm going this week to Oban, Dyer, Gibson, and Henderson Counties. Also going to Benton and Henry County. So, this is a big project. We're not looking for state funds. We're looking to do this privately. It's going to cost about half a million dollars. It takes a lot of money to move a tomb, and it takes a lot of money to have a ceremony for the President. And then also, we do not want to remove the presence of James K. Pope from the State Capitol. We want to commission a statue of President and Sarah Pope, which I think will be one of the first ones in the country of a first lady on the State Capitol grounds. So, I'm asking today for a letter of support. We've got letter of support from Murray County in Columbia and Spring Hill. And was hoping that we can get a letter of support from Mount Pleasant. Any questions?
Questions? Well, I guess the only one I had, and I'm glad you said that, because I was understanding, you know, that all the family members was against it, and it's just that, just...
Just one. Just one. And that's one of the things we've been...
I realize I take a...
We've been, President Pope had no children. And so, who we're going to is nieces and cousins and stuff that's been, you know, way back. And so, that's some of the things we've been kind of fighting against, you know, there's, when we went to the state and the Senate, it was said on the Senate floor that President Pope never lived in Columbia, that he and Sarah never lived there, which we've been fighting in history, and we've been fighting one family member. So, we had, we have the support in the House. We had it in June. Because of the gas tax and stuff going on, we kind of got pushed down the line, we voted in a committee. We look forward to January. I think we'll have the votes in January.
You have a sample letter of what you'd like to write.
I can give you sample letters that I have, and let you make copies of them if you would like, from county mayors, if you'd like that. I can let you have those and make the copy.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe?
I just see, well, what I've been doing is going to county mayors. They haven't been going to their commission. They've just been writing letters that, hey, I think this is a great idea. I support it. And sign a letter. And I went in front of the county commission. I've been in front of the city commission. I didn't go to the Spring Hill Commission. I kind of let him know what was going on. He said, that's a great idea. I'm writing a letter. So...
Do you have a deadline, when you want...
I don't have a deadline. I'd like to get it soon, because we're going in front of the, we're starting to gear back up again. And so, sometime before January, I'd like to have it.
Well, I had asked that we do it as a commission. I don't mind writing a letter myself.
That'd be great.
When I put it on Mount Pleasant Stationery, I would prefer to at least have a majority of the votes that would be a support.
Absolutely.
Because that's just the way I like to do business.
Right.
Everybody shares, and if there's disagreement, it won't be a problem with me.
Right.
But I guess what I'd like to do is make a motion and authorize the city mayor to write this letter on the hand of the commission.
I'll make that motion, because we write the letters, and I think we were all in agreement. I make the motion that we should write a letter and support that.
Any further discussions? Anybody opposed that? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. If I sign that, we'll take care of that for you, Brian.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, spend your time. Thank you for doing what you're doing.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Very worthwhile project.
Thank you.
If you'll wait one second, I'm getting the business cards for you. Here you go. And you can just send the samples, and the mayor will work it out from there.
Actually, if you want to use what I gave you, that's what they've been using for the letter.
Oh, okay.
But I'll be glad to see you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, you buddy.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start back on six again. Ordinance 2017-1007, public hearing slash final reading, and ordinance to amend ordinance 2017-1005, set ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, ending June 30, 2018, providing an effective date.
Mayor and commissioners, this ordinance is obviously the public reading, the final hearing for the first budget amendment of this fiscal year. It changes three things, and Loretta will chime in if I've missed something, but it provides money for some staff in codes and planning to do some property maintenance, because with Robert there by himself, it's just too much. It provides a small amount of money, $5,000, for us to have somebody in here continuing our scanning process, where we're scanning all of our resolutions, ordinances, and documents, so that things don't walk out of the building and they stay in our computers. And it also provides for further in this agenda, very last thing, restrooms at Howard Field not to exceed $15,000. Is there anything I'm missing, or those are the three things?
Okay. For that ordinance, it's also a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak for or against this particular ordinance? And if the record shows that no one spoke in favor, from the public, in favor of or against this ordinance, this time we'll ask that the...
I make a motion, please.
Okay. Make a motion in second. Any further discussion? What asked I read, two, call roll, please.
Mr. Granbury?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay.
Announce.
Announce, so that ordinance has been approved. Item B, ordinance 2017-1009, public hearing slash final reading, and ordinance requiring all leagues affiliated with or using Mount Pleasant Parks and Recreation Department facilities to execute a league charter and abide by code of ethics.
Mayor and commissioners, as you said, this is a public hearing, final reading, and this is just putting into writing what we expect from coaches and people that work with the youth on Mount Pleasant field, and we ask them to sign a code of ethics before we allow them to take part in coaching the league here in Mount Pleasant.
Anyone in the public wishing to speak for or against this particular ordinance? And if the record shows, please, that no one spoke for or against that from the public?
Although, Mayor, I know that some, you know, some people can be overlooked or whatever, you know, but this here is a good thing, so we need it.
Any other discussion? Chair, maintain a motion, please.
Make a motion that we approve of, so the ordinance has presented.
Motion made to approve this, if second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call, I'm going to call you clerk, I can't break the old habits.
Mr. Granbury?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Announce.
Announce, okay. Ordinance 2017-1009, that's passing, now, please. Item seven, monthly financial slash budget report.
I think you received the full copy. Couple of things that we are working on in the next part of the month. We've completed our year-end adjustment, and the auditors are scheduled to start their field work first next month, so they will be completed, and they will present you those final reports at the December board meeting for your approval, the audited financials. We have received the financials from the electric system, like this past week as well. And the second thing, we're really, our projects we've taken on, and Latoya's been very instrumental in helping us work on these, updating our collections and extension policies. We, you'll note that you're being asked to approve those, that one is an ordinance and one is a resolution. The resolution is the collections policy, the ordinance is the actual extension policy. We did find out that the TCA will allow us to increase the return check fee to $30,000, which we did incorporate that in the, in that resolution that you have received. We're also, highlights also include writing off deceased accounts will be just the same as any other account, and if they're not left unpaid, they'll be turned over to collections just as any other account. Under the extension policy, under the old policy, they were given two months. That has created a, some several situations where we were not able to collect by the time that extension had been, the time had lapsed on it, and we were able to move forward. The person had moved on and gone, and so we ended up losing those money. So, what we're proposing is that that cutoff, that they be allowed to get two weeks instead of two months, shortening that time will help, still help people if they need a little bit of extra time to get that paid, but not create a sobal in effect. You have anything else you'd like to...
No, not really. I think that, I always think about, I don't want anyone to be cut off, because it creates more problems for our guys to go back and forth, and giving a person two more days or whatever, another week would help them instead of two months, so certainly we should already collect it. And nine times out of ten, the people who do come and ask for extension sometime, they will buy the extension for two months, and they move on and don't come back and pay, and we don't even know where they are, because they don't want to close out. And so, if a person is, you know, going through something, we don't know what a person was going to buy, and I think we should be here to help our constituents or whatever, because they do pay our salaries. So, if there's someone who's going to continue to live here, we should help them in any way we can, so allowing them two weeks would help them more, opposed to not cutting them off, because if you cut them off, it creates, you know, if someone has special toys or health issues and things of that nature, then our codes have to go out. So, anything we can do to help is fine, but two months is too long to keep a hold of anything.
Thank you, Latoya.
Thank you.
Also, the reason that we have to do both is the resolution references the ordinance, so they have to be done at the same time.
My only question, Loretta, is, we discussed, in the case of a deceased, Bill, about maybe looking at filing a lien against an estate. Did we decide against that? Because I know there's a point that it becomes bad money spent to try to get good because of the cost of filing that lien against an estate, but it's not that terribly expensive. Did we ever come up with a number that said, all right, if it's over $50,000, we're going to do it, but if it's under, we're not, because...
I don't think we have, and I don't think we've talked to Cory about it yet.
No, that's not really in this resolution. There's a place that, they took out the deceased, I forget what the language was. They took out the special part for deceased, exemption for decedent, but they also gave the city manager discretion for unusual situations. So, there's still leeway in there, I think, to do something different.
That's the only thing, I guess, about deceased. What I don't like about that, I mean, going back, I guess, just, I think, you know, like if somebody owes something, you know, it should be, you know, put in the paper, you know, I guess most states or whatever is put in the paper. And at that time, you know, it should be looked at. But that's just...
But there will be a point in time that you're spending good money for bad, because there's attorney fees involved, of course, you're not much if filing.
Can we not have security deposit?
Yes. And that would be as part of that process, and also...
We immediately take the deposit back when they're going to have to.
Well, that's what, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so if they're past, you're a deceased, and you take the money, that kind of thing.
Yes, many times does not cover everything.
Yeah.
So, you do feel you have that authority now to look at that without us doing anything else? I think Cory kind of leaves it, if you do have that authority.
I think I do. Once we make a decision on what we're going to pursue with liens, we'll share that with you.
Okay, that's great.
Can I say something else? Usually the ones that are on there, though, for the deceased ones that do have an estate, their family members do immediately come in and say, hey, I'm a power attorney, and we want to try to close this out, because they have other things they want to close out as well. They will give us a new account number to draw it out, whatever. And then the ones that we have had on the deceased list, the ones that I did see on the collection notice, was these people had none of the left to can. There were no one left. There were, the daughter died, the mother died too, so it was no one else. So, you will be, you have to, it's not nothing that you're probably set in stone. Every situation will be different, so the money may not be, you know, spent wildly to go up, pursue someone that's not even there, or no one to take on the stay or anything like that. But generally, most people do come in.
And that's why, you can spend some bad money trying to get...
And I think that it allows us the...
The leeway to do that, isn't it?
Yeah, and...
And y'all know more about it.
And by using, and by putting it as part of your normal process of collection procedure, if it's something, if it's a situation like that, it's really, we're not ever going to have to pay anything to get the collection. She's only going to bill us for what they collect. So, if they're collecting things, if there's nothing there to collect, they're not, and that's...
And I understand it, but they get a portion...
to pay anything to get the collection, agency's only gonna bill us for what they collect. So if they're collecting things, if there's nothing there to collect, they're not and that's.
And I understand that, but they get a portion of that when they do collect.
Yes.
Where in this case, if it was not turned over to the collection agency, the city would get all of it minus the charges to file the lien.
Right.
And, and you are gonna know better than anyone sitting here whether we need to pursue that or not.
Yes, I think I should.
And I'm gonna leave that to the operations, to the city manager and the people that you work with every day.
Now they have in place also, if it's a bill of two months or more, you can't go past two months of your deposit and pool. Before, we had no leeway, just minimum bills occurring, no one there, no one come and sign a paper to close out, so people just generate a lot of stuff on your collection list, it's just minimum bills, no usage. So people don't feel compelled to come and pay a bill, they didn't live there no longer, it's just no one come and sign the paper. So you have to kind of use some kind of common sense and everything on some of this stuff and a lot of the, the collection agencies breaking money off or something that they, we didn't need them for on some of them.
And again, too, the, on some of those situations where you've got no family or anything left, it's gonna be, your other policies, your collection policies also going to affect that because we're gonna be turning them over quicker, writing them off quicker, so those with minimum bills won't be stacking up. And just in, kind of in conclusion, I think that overall, I think we've both made a lot of progress and I think that there's a lot of work left to do, but I think that we have got a good starting point here and I think that we can only improve upon that.
So we won't vote on that until we get 10A and as we've said in the past, you'll have write-offs three to four times a year.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
We do need to have a vote to accept a report.
Okay, we need to accept a report with exception of that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All in favor, you settled the national report, second?
Mr. Granberry?
Granberry, second. Mr. Granberry, seconded that. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Now that's been accepted, please. Item eight, monthly report from city manager.
Mayor and Commissioners, the monthly report that you have in your packets that the department heads have put together, create the state of the city and that it'll be available to you October 1st online and in city halls. And that does not need to extend approval.
Any questions from the city manager? Sir. Announce one thing, personnel report, Tommy Theresa Davis, administrator, says 38 years.
Thirty-eight years.
I mean, that's really great.
That's, that's great.
Tony Chapman, can't believe he survived anywhere 31 years.
He's retired every year in the past three years. Theresa was here before city hall was built.
Well, that's right.
Tony retires every day.
All these, well, why look at him, tell him, you know, thanks for working for him.
I should have get the pure mind.
Okay, special reports from other city departments or committees applicable, wastewater, gas system, ports.
Mayor, there are no reports for either.
Okay. Item 10, new business. A, ordinance 2017-1010, an order to amend title 18, waters and sewers, chapter one, water and sewer system administration, section eight dash 111, five, customer billing and payment policy entitled 19, electricity and gas, chapter three, gas, section 19, dash 08, press is five, with the municipal code of city Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the extension ordinance that Loretta was just referring to, that we are reducing the, the amount of time, two months to two weeks.
Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. Most of the duty made at second that ordinance is ordered, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All like sign. Order 2017-10, that's 1010, that's passed, pending this one. Item B, 2017-1011, an order to amend title eight, chapter one and two, the Mount Pleasant municipal code related to intoxicating liquor and beer.
Mayor and Commissioners, if you remember, this came at study session that we have a new business that's trying to open a general store and wants to sell some local artisan micro beer and we realized that the distance from the church downtown wouldn't allow that and we've reduced that distance in the past, so we're putting in front of you the exact same ordinance, reducing the distance from 500 feet to 250 feet.
I realize that is a very congregational, but have they been made aware of the fact that we're gonna do this?
I don't know, have they? We can do that between now and personnel, have we?
Could we please?
Yeah, I mean, I have a contact there that I communicate with fairly often, but I have not thought to talk to them about it.
Yeah, let's just, let's just be courteous.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll give you your contact there.
Okay, see if it's the same, but I don't think there'll be a problem, but absolutely just wanna communicate with us.
I know, but I think we need full disclosure.
Absolutely, no question. I wouldn't vote for it, so that's.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Alrighty. We'll give a first reading, that's.
We need to make a vote on it.
Okay, we'll take a, vote on this, please, a motion.
I make a motion.
First reading?
Motion.
Okay, duty made on first reading, is it second?
Second.
You dissected, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote like sign?
Yeah.
No, that clerk call roll, please. I wanna ask one question before we start. You said we have done this before. I know one instance. Now, when we do this, are we not changing it for the entirety? It doesn't just apply here, it's gonna be across this city.
Yes.
It's not gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just for off-premises beer sales, doesn't change things with liquor and on-premises consumption on the premises.
How many churches would you say could be affected by this? I know that's a bit, might, could be confused, you could come down the road, but I mean, right now, if this happened today, how many churches could you say could be affected by this?
Methodist Church.
Which is already very close to the grill. Grill's got full liquor license.
Yeah.
Baptist Church and the.
Which is already also close to the grill, which church were you thinking of?
Just this Presbyterian Church.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one I.
We got one right down in the old Ferris Morrisville building too now.
Yeah, that's true. Four, four, five of them, right?
And there was one across the street.
But most of them are already, the couple that we named are already within that distance to grill that already has.
What this does, that it changes the off-premises, which is basically like a quick sack or grocery store, in the ordinance already, there's already, if the business is in the downtown business district, which is set from Bond to church, downtown area, if the business is primarily selling food, they can offer on-premises beer already, that's already in there, there's no distance on that.
That's a no.
Yes, you have to have a certain percentage of food, you've gotta be almost a whole restaurant.
You have to have a beer primarily.
Package of beer?
No.
Not packaged, on-premises consumption.
Drinking it there.
Oh, well, there, yeah, I thought you were saying to take it away.
This is just.
Oh, I got you there.
To go buy a package and go home, yeah.
Like what we granted to Fred's.
Right.
Package.
I think last year, we had 12 off-premises package sales.
Pretty much every gas station.
We have it for 15.
And those licenses, no matter how much?
For $100 a year.
$100 a year.
The permits, the permits are $100 a year.
Okay.
How much?
The permit's $100 a year.
I'm alright with it, provided that we made contact with this and any others we move forward, if there is other requests, if we contact, I don't think you can put that frankly in an ordinance.
No, that's just good practice.
I just think that that's what we should do.
To vote? Yeah.
Mr. Granberry?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Vote three to two.
And all of us observant, we'll actually change our votes next time.
Right.
That's right.
It's hard to vote, you don't even know that time.
It won't be yes votes next time if we don't know if I'll be, see if they have an opportunity to come forward.
That's right.
I have a question. Okay, this may be a moot point. What if these nine people in this church say, no, they don't like it?
Then we don't do it.
You want to.
That's right.
You don't have to honor it.
It's just you got another reading.
And they need to come in, they need to come and speak.
If they got an issue, they need to be here.
Okay. Moving on into item C, resolution 217-27, resolution to stab the city Mount Pleasant policy that no person shall be appointed to sit on any municipal permission if such person owes money to the city of Mount Pleasant or any of its departments.
Mayor and Commissioners, I think this came up after we did such a large write-off last month with our write-off policy and this sets up that if they're owing any taxes or utilities, they would not be able to sit on a board, but it does also give 60 days to correct the situation. Anything else, Cory?
I think it requires the board to give notice to them.
Yes.
And then get 60 days from that time period to remedy the situation.
Now, when we do that, we will do that in executive session, is that correct?
What do you mean? Just not in public meetings?
Right.
I don't even think it needs a session, I think a letter would go out.
That's all, I just don't, I don't wanna open this up.
How long did you base?
Sixty days.
Have to, have to letters?
Sixty days.
Is there further discussion? Chairman, entertain a motion, please. So move. So move for adoption, is there second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All like sign, resolution 2017-27 is passed. Item D, resolution 2017-28, resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease slash purchase agreement and related instruments and determining other matters in connection therewith of our forward place vehicles.
Mayor and Commissioners, last meeting, you approved the purchase of these vehicles, I'm sorry, the lease purchase of these vehicles and until we knew that the lease company approved it, we couldn't come forward with a resolution. They have approved it and so now we're asking for you to approve this lease purchase as a resolution.
First of all, have you looked at this lease agreement at all?
I did, I looked at it with the chief and we're fine, rights were, rights were good.
Rights are good.
Yeah, you had asked the question about, I can't remember how you worded that, does this beat the in lieu of?
Doesn't remember.
In lieu of tax, something.
Oh, tax of drilling, right.
Yes, and then the, we did reach out and ask them that and they said, this is below as you're gonna get.
He was.
Yeah.
Are we, which one of these four options are we going to choose?
Yeah, I thought we discussed five.
Yeah.
First payment.
First payment due immediately upon execution.
Due at closing.
Yeah.
Okay. Is further discussion on this resolution? Chairman, entertain a motion, please.
I make a motion.
Second. Motion to accept, second.
Second.
You dissected, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign, resolution 2017-28 is passed.
So it is the last choice though, the five year with the first payment due right away?
Item E, resolution 2017-29, a resolution to apply for Tennessee Department of Transportation, transportation alternatives programs, funds for transportation enhancement concerns.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the transportation alternatives grant that is due October 3rd. We have an outside firm that is preparing that for us and it is $1,000 to $1,250,000. We would hear in August of 2018 if we're awarded that and the match would be $250,000 to $300,000 that would not be due for another 18 months from next August of 2018. So I talked to you at the study session about how at this point, I'm not concerned about the match, I believe that we can match that over the course of the next three years and if we can't, we say no to the grant. And this is for all this kind of stuff that we've been talking about, this is sidewalks, this is streets, in the downtown footprint, street lights, underground power systems, the square here, curbing, everything from just about Bond to church on Main Street.
Okay, is there further discussion on this? Chairman, entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to accept, is there second?
Second.
You dissected, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All like sign, resolution 2017-29 has passed. Item F, resolution 2017-30, resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant adopting a utility adjustment, deposit, collection and write-off policy.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this goes back to exactly what Loretta was presenting in her finance report, this ties in with the ordinance that you first passed on first reading ordinance, 2017-1010.
Okay, questions? Chairman, entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Move for adoption, second.
Second.
You dissected, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All like sign, that resolution, that's passed, item 2017-30. Item G, resolution 2017-31, a resolution authorized the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to participate in the food safety partners matching grant program.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a grant, an annual grant through TML and it is a $1,500 grant that we matched with $1,500 to make $3,000. And how many times have we gotten this?
Since I've been here, this will be the fourth year.
Fourth year, something we get every year and we usually learn safety equipment and spread it out through the department.
This year, we're purchasing cones and safety lights for speed trucks.
It was in our budget, I know it's a small amount of money.
No, there'll be a budget amendment for that $1,500. Any grant we get, there'll be a budget amendment because we didn't budget assuming we would get grants.
Okay, further discussion? Chairman, entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
You dissected, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All like sign, resolution H, resolution G has passed on that, 2017-31. Item H, 2017-32, resolution approving agreement for payment in lieu of taxes to Mount Pleasant Municipal Housing Authority.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a resolution that needs to be passed that apparently we have not had in the past. We do have a contract with the housing authority, but we have not done the in lieu of tax resolution and I stood corrected at the study session, this is something we only have to do one time, we're with the power systems and the gas system, we have to do that every year, every fiscal year. So this is a one-time thing that we need to have in place along with a contract.
I have a lovely, lovely contract. Dated 1978, the print on this thing, how long has it been since y'all seen that font?
Got a test on that and typing.
Okay, is there further discussion? Chairman, entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there second?
Second.
You dissected, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All like sign, resolution has been accepted, 2017-32. Item I, resolution 2017-33, resolution authorized the city of Mount Pleasant to execute amendment number one to agreement for survey and schematic design development plans and preliminary engineering services with CT Consultants Incorporated for downtown improvement project.
Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about this at length at the study session and since then, the mayor has reached out to Public Works and we're gonna be contacting Marge Wagner to find out exactly what kind of records they do have about what is under our paved roads and our sidewalks, but because none of you were here when this project started, this is a multi-year project, started probably 12, 2012, and most of you have seen these books where it showed existing conditions of sidewalks, streets, et cetera. So that work's been done and you've also seen the pretty picture of what we hope it would look like in the future once all of these, the stormwater sewers are corrected and we get in there. We talked about things like, do we need cameras? A lot of that homework has been done here. The next step that we're, we're voting on to. The next step that we're voting on to amend this contract is to get the sidewalks and the streets and the power lines under and the poles gone. It has to be engineered to be able to take the next step that would be taken if we get the million dollar grant. So I want to make sure you all knew this because none of us were around when this all started. So I try really hard to understand exactly where we are so that you know what you're voting on. But this is something that was done in another city at the same timeframe where they get very detailed with exactly what's under the street, exactly what the measurement is from the front of the business, so that you can take the next step to get that done. If that clarifies anything from Thursday night.
Now you just muddy the water. So what is Barge Wagner going to provide for us?
We just want to know historically over the years, and when I say years, we're talking twenty years.
Twenty about forty years.
Yeah, even more.
What they have?
We have done work in this city as long as I can remember on sewer lines and water.
Right.
Particularly the sewer lines. And I can remember when the cameras were first put down in the sewer line here, it was a big thing. I mean, technology back then, that was just a rare thing, you never heard of that. You know, it's like movies coming to Mount Pleasant, it was that kind of thing.
Okay.
But Barge Wagner was our engineering firm when I was here in the seventies. They're still our engineering firm. I would like to see what we have done with the previous surveys. They're proposing now to do, spend a great deal of money, which I know has to be done at some point.
Right.
But I'd like to know what, what's happened to all this other work? What did we get done? What did we get for our money?
What did they check out then?
Yeah.
And if those haven't been kept up to date, they're not, you know, worth that much to us. But we want to have it housed in City Hall so we know what they've done. Now, they were not our engineers for a while, if you remember. The engineers that we had for the lagoon system is one of the reasons we came back and got back with Barge Wagner. But, so they even did take whatever information Public Works might have had when they created this document, so that we can take the next step to correct the problems.
All right.
And we're going to try and just figure out what history is out there and make sure we have it at City Hall.
So should we defer this for thirty days?
No, no.
Okay.
Regardless, this is the next step to take any information that we have that was learned in this in two thousand and thirteen and over the years of history of the sewer, to get to the next step, to do drawings, to fix it, improve it, make it better. Fix the pipes, fix the sidewalks, get the power lines underground, all of that, that's the next step. So whatever we find is going to be great for us to have on record, but it's not going to change the need to do this.
Okay.
We don't develop a plan for several things here, and then I'll look.
We'll never get them done.
We'll never get them done.
That's right.
You get all the grants in the world, if you don't execute them, all the data you want, but we've got to get a plan made.
Yes, we do.
And this is actually a plan that's been in place for some time that we're just picking up and carrying it on.
Well, we're just beginning to execute.
Yeah.
But what the mayor's looking for is the record of the plan.
Yes, and we're going to pull that together, see.
If it didn't last, why didn't it last?
Right.
And I know we made it through this guy, I can remember, I told Kate, I remember when the water, the sewer mains were blown off down Third Avenue, you could see them rise literally up off the pavement. And the water shooting, that terrible problem down Third. On Third, there was a terrible problem down Church, down in that area, that where Margaret's Downey Restaurant was, and just several things have been remedied. But they were doing that.
And I talked to the planning firm, and I said, what about situations like the strip of water line in front of Buckhead's? That all of our records, that I'm sure we got from Barge Wagner, showed that we had a six inch line, and until we cut into the ground, it was two inches. And he said that's going to happen, you will find some discrepancies, but, you know, that's how we get to this next point, that we've got to get it as accurate as possible.
Bobby Nutter also possibly will reach out to me.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to reach out to him, but anything that Barge Wagner did when Bobby was here, and we do, Donnie talks to him regularly, I talk to him fairly regularly, because any knowledge he has is very valuable.
Okay, folks, we.
Let's see where that works hand in hand with going back and looking at what Barge has provided us in the past.
Yeah.
It's nice to see.
Especially since they're there now.
Yeah.
So you need a motion on that?
I do, I need a motion on two oh one seven dash three three, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there second?
Seconded.
You're seconded, further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lifetime resolution two oh one seven three three has passed. Item J, gas rate study.
Yes, I would like if the commission wishes that we go back and do a rate study on our gas utility system that was left out of the last rate study that was done in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. I think it's important for us to know what it costs for us to operate that utility, and we would include sanitation pickup as a small part of that study. And the bid we've got, correct me if I'm wrong, is seventeen five not to exceed twenty-two thousand. And so if you made a motion, I would ask that, and that would come out of gas for the most part.
And it was with travel.
Yeah, they include their travels back and forth from Alabama, they in Alabama.
They have, I think they have not with that.
Just the same people who do that.
Jim Thornton, Jim Thornton.
What kind of timeframe is this working?
They did it very couple of months.
Usually it's a couple of months to gather the data, and then they're ready by the third month of presenting to the commission.
Yeah.
My dad's still a hoarder.
It's got to go down.
It's going down, it's going down.
And we're really concerned about what we're charging our industrial customers, and we just, I mean, we should know what it costs to provide a service for a utility, there's no question about that, and we don't.
I think it was more, I changed it when we first started out this year, so it was without commercial and industrial rates to do this because they told us they thought we were really undercharging.
It'll be this amount a month.
Yeah.
Yes.
Someone will have a problem with it, it's residence, I have a problem.
I do too.
Regardless, we still know what it, we still need to know what it costs to provide.
If we're going to try to operate this city much more like a business, which we are trying, and I've smiled at everybody for doing, we need to know what it costs us to do business.
This is eleven minutes up, it is bigger than most businesses around, so it is.
And if we're losing money, we don't need to be losing money.
Yeah. All right, so we don't need a motion on it, do we?
Yes, if you don't mind. That dollar amount.
Okay.
A motion to approve, moving forward with the gas rate study and sanitation not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars.
That's coming out of where?
That's major, it's coming out again.
Well, actually, he's broken it.
It's not coming out of state three days.
We're sneaking it in there. Sanitation portion will come out of sanitation and the gas portion.
I'm assuming the budget is so. All in favor of the gas rate study, please, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like sign, that study is going to approve, please.
Who made that motion?
I seconded.
In second, okay, Mr. White, sorry.
Okay.
And mayor, the next, I did not anticipate this being on the agenda for an official vote, the discussion on the flag unless you want it to be.
I like getting it done, I'm not waiting.
I think I got ahead now for everything, but Miss Redd.
Wouldn't have said, corner committee to study.
Wait, 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 wait.
Everyone that I have said anything to me about it, which is not that many, have been in favor of the blue flag.
Not in your bag.
Well, everybody's Alabama, but that's fine.
And that is what I sensed as well.
I'm not going to, that's the Marines, they're red.
And then the next pick would be to price it and hopefully get a better price.
Get us the bids on it and so forth, and.
I thought that's where we left it.
I thought we did too.
I think that's why I said I didn't know if it needed to be on the agenda.
No, we don't need it.
Okay. I'll follow up with that.
Okay, item I, report on Mount Joy debt obligation C T dash zero two five three.
And mayor, as you know, this Mount Joy project is closed, and you came in and signed the bond for it. But the agencies want the commission to acknowledge in the form of a motion that they approve the report, correct?
You accepted the report.
Yeah, the report that's in your pocket.
Make a motion that we accept the report as per se.
Okay, that motion been made to accept that report, is there second to that?
Second.
You're seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like sign, that will be taken care of, C T dash zero two five three. Item M, approval of Howard Field Restaurant not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Mayor and commissioners, we talked about this a little bit at the study session. This money is not in the budget, but it is available through the sale of property where it was in the deed that the money needed to stay in parks and recs. So the money is in our coffers, and we will dedicate it to the next budget of, well, it's in this budget, that's right, it's in this budget amendment not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. So we will go out with the specs that we have and work on bids upon approval from the commission.
I hope that y'all really surprised me.
I hope so too.
We are, we are going to surprise you, and you're going to have to eat crow.
I'll be glad to, for fifteen thousand, if you know.
It's going to be twelve five.
And Mr. Roddenoff, the county can't bill one of fifteen thousand.
We are going to do things the county cannot do.
I believe if you do it.
We are a smaller community than the county.
What's else about?
There's four times as many county commissioners as there are, so maybe it's cost four times as much.
That's right. Take those blood hot air. I make a motion that we approve that.
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you.
You're seconded, make a motion, you're seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Do I need to add that we, that the mayor eats crow?
We plan to eat, Gardena Park is next on the list for the same thing.
I love you as a lunch, that's all. Kate has something she needs to bring.
And there was nobody to sign up, just think now that's the signing sheet.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take care of your items.
Okay, I have actually two things, just to make sure everybody's aware that the eighteen buildings are coming down, starting Thursday at Main Street, down Bluegrass, and one on Broadway, and then also to include the Raven Green building. So we'll have streets closed for a while. It should be maybe a ten day process, starting with demolition on Thursday morning, probably you'll see safety structures going up tomorrow. So you'll be able to access the city from Southport Road by cutting off at Broadway and coming back up to Main, so.
Be a big change when we come.
It'll be a big change, yes.
I'm just going to run the nail collector after.
Oh, my word. Everybody that has one of those pieces of equipment needs to be out there.
I'll put one of our city vehicles and go to them and pick them up.
Yeah. And then the last thing I had is I was writing down to let the commission know that I was going to be at the Tennessee City Managers Association Annual Conference tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, in Gatlinburg. Loretta is also going, and as I wrote it down, I remembered that the commission at the time insisted there was language in my contract that I couldn't do anything if it was over five hundred dollars without your permission. And this, two nights stay, two nights stay, right, two nights stay and the conference is six ninety-eight, and then it's a regular per diem that's allowed. Now, Loretta and everybody else can go anywhere they want for many thousands of dollars, but I got to get permission to go over five hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, we have a chance for you.
So if I get permission, I'll go, if not, she goes by herself.
Have a chance for you.
This is the first conference I will attend in eighteen months, for this very reason.
So do you need us to?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve that.
Well, White, make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
You're seconded, any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like sign, you may take your trip.
Thank you. We're leaving at ten o'clock in the morning tomorrow.
Leave it after your phone when we call.
I've got two of them. That's all I had, thank you.
Did you say that no one has signed?
No one, yes, finally.
I have initial demolition on Thursday and Friday, because the Tavon is having their annual meeting down there, and that's going to be, I definitely have a problem on Thursday because they're having my aunt's funeral down there.
Church and the corner.
No, we're having it down there on, at the Tavon.
On Broadway?
Yes.
And we talked about that, that's going to be the last building to come down.
Okay, long as my family's not blocked off, I will be moving.
Broadway will be the open street.
No, I will. You don't know family.
We talked about that yesterday.
See with Steve.
In the paper today, yeah.
Now, is your daughter going to work at Bell and all so long that she work, yeah, she must wait for it.
And see what the city dry cleaners can do.
I tried to hire her to work my truck, so she wanted to work for Bell, that's my memory instead. You made a good move, I'm doing that tonight. Okay, you got anything else?
Mayor, I have one thing. Kate, I'd like to have it put on our study session, you know, for next month, and that's on the sidewalks. And that's, I guess, like a reston versus business. There's just something to think about because I don't think we pay for businesses, but at the same time, some of our businesses were not able to get grants because of the way it is. I just think we all need to be, you know, treated equally, that's just the way we are.
Our point, to look at all these things in the next fourteen months.
Excellent.
If you hold on, I can get it.
What I've tried to do between now and then is have some kind of samples of what some other cities might be doing to have a base.
Hey, while we're doing it, if you don't mind, Mike, I'd like to add this too, if we can come up with that, and I'm not all about a bunch of paperwork, of course, but a rough sketch plan of what they may be proposing to do, even if it's residential or commercial, either one, just, I'm not talking about giving the property owner that's requesting the money, matching funds for the sidewalks. Just, I'm not talking about hiring an engineer to come in and draw you a plan and spend five thousand dollars. I'm talking about, here's where we expect the entrances to be, just something very basic.
Right.
You know, if it's a homeowner, my driveway's going to be right here, and that's about all it has to say. Mike, I'll use you as an example, if it's you, here's going to be my entrance, and it's the whole front of it, basically, just show us that. And I don't think that's being too overbearing or asking for too much.
Well, it's not asking for too much, it's, the ordinance is very fully written.
Yes, it is.
In my opinion, it's very definite says that it means whether it's for everybody.
It's for everybody, way right.
It's not for residential, it's not, it's for both, and as far as I'm concerned, the ordinance is way out of line, I don't know for them. Again, we can't ask anybody because it took about all this.
That's right.
Mr. Edwards was the mayor, and I don't know what he has thought for about that, and there had to be a reason for it. And there's a little savings to people who have the ability or the expertise to get some work done on their own that would be approved by the city, and the orders don't have to be paid. And folks, I'm going to tell you, I push commercial and industrial stuff, you well know that, and they pay fifteen percent more tax than we do on our residential.
Right.
And you know the thing, this town will grow to a point, but we got to have bidders, we've got to have.
Can you borrow that?
Maybe we put it on the study session so we can all.
Yeah, so that's where that.
I would like to, I saw Commissioner Roddy come in, and I would like to thank Pop and Tom Oliver.
That was on my list, thank you.
For their support last night, for those of you that weren't at the four hour long county commissioners meeting, for the support for our, hopefully, going ahead courthouse. That will hopefully be moved so that we can get on and.
Further than we've ever been.
Yeah, we've gotten further than we've ever been, want to thank both of you and the business people. And if you, business people and citizens, if you see a commissioner, a county commissioner, that, anywhere, tell them how much you appreciate and what you think of moving the four hours, because they think we don't, we think it's just us up here, but we know it's all of us at once.
Are you going to hand reports you want to give us?
What time does a meeting start? I'm here and the police had me blocked out, I thought y'all done.
Well, we knew you was coming.
That's because we've got a country music star giving a video.
Should have stayed out there, you could have been in the video.